Here.
Here. President?
Here. Thank you, I believe we have a quorum. We had no closed session, at least if we did, I wasn't there. We'll begin with our invocation, Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tempore Duper. Please stand.
I'd actually like to open tonight's meeting in the memory of Officer Gregory Casillas of the Pomona Police Department, who was shot and killed Friday night protecting and serving our community. If you would, bow your heads. Dear Father in Heaven, thank you again for bringing us together to discuss matters of utmost importance, the governance of our community, protecting our residents, ensuring that our folks make it home and they're able to see their families. And we thank you for our protectors. We thank you for Officer Casillas and his family, and we pray that you comfort them and guide them in the next weeks and months as they struggle to understand. And we ask that you help all of us, give them the support that they need. Thank you again, we know that you have a plan for all of us, dear Lord, and we pray this is your name, amen. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, a one nation under God, indivisible, with its liberty and justice for all.
Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir, but I do have an air correction on the consent calendar item number seven, so we'll get to that when we have the consent calendar.
Our next item is all reports, public participation. I have two requests to speak, and I'll just take them in order that are presented to me. Elaine McPadden?
Hello, everyone. As you probably know, my name's Elaine McPadden, and I actually just came from doing my radio show a couple hours ago on KCAA. I don't know if you're familiar with it, it used to be an AM station, but now it's AM and FM. Our now, our manager has done some work for, I'm not sure if it was the university that was working on a radio station, but we're, I'm pretty proud of our station because we're privately owned, and our, the owner actually drove a tractor to Washington DC and back for farmers' rights. And his son is an organic farmer. And if you get to know me, you'll find out that I'm pretty big on organic. I'm a dietitian, I went to school at Loma Linda, I got my masters in public health there. And I had a plan before I even went to school. And that was to try to educate people on what's been going on with our food system. And that's because we're talking life and death. And as a dietitian, I believe I can heal with food, but not with poisoned food. And I recently, about a year ago, I went and tested my thyroid. And I had my, like my physical, but my thyroid tested high, and I'm like, what the heck? You know? It's like, I've been eating this all-organic diet, I know I'm really healthy, you know, jogging, exercising. Well, because of my radio show, I've had the pleasure of interviewing some of the top scientists in the country with my Smart Health Talk. I want to know the truth. I want to know what the facts are, because that's the only thing that I want to bring to my show, is I want to bring people, you know, the truth of what the heck is going on, you know, so they can protect themselves and protect their families. Well, I decided last year that after I had heard stories, and I'm not sure if any of you can relate, that there actually used to be millions of monarchs in Loma Linda. Is there anyone here that remembers that? Seen monarchs around Loma Linda? No one? I've talked to a lot of people that do. Not that long ago, there actually used to be millions. They used to cover cars. It was incredible. Not just monarchs, but all kinds of other beneficial insects and bees. Something I think kids nowadays don't even know what it's like to see some of these insects, because they've all been killed off. Why? Two things, pretty simple. Pesticides, not enough milkweed. Well, I started doing a little more of my investigative journalism and used the Freedom of Information Act. And when I got the information on what pesticides had been sprayed in Loma Linda and actually all of San Bernardino County for an entire year, it was shocking, disturbing, and extremely upsetting when you actually go and do the research and find out just what these pesticides do. Birth defects? I mean, we're talking some major hormone disruptors right across the street from our school, but not just there. All around the hospital, and all around Loma Linda, and all around Loma Linda Academy. Dichamba, Roundup, 24D, you might remember that as ancient orange? Agent Orange, remember that in Vietnam? They sprayed that with your little kids play here in Loma Linda. They're spraying that all around the school, and you may think, oh, well, we have that little buffer zone and all that, like it's just going to magically disappear, and there's no residue left. There is. I've talked to the number one scientist on pesticide, Dr. Michael Hansen, senior scientist at Consumer Reports. He's the one that educates our legislators, been my guest many times, senior scientist at MIT, research scientist, Dr. Stephanie Seneff. Like her, her mind is so high up, it blows, it blows my mind, I have to like study for three days to interview her. She just published on glyphosate a couple of days ago, and what she's finding is there's a synthetic glycine in glyphosate, it has a methyl group, but it's still able to be incorporated into our proteins. How fun. We get to have glyphosate in our brain for our neurotransmitters, in our hormones, in our heart cells. So, not only that, but it accumulates in our bone marrow, and she's predicting 80% autism in our boys in 15 years, at the rate we're going. Dr. Tyrone Hayes, number two most-used pesticide. He, he's the youngest professor at Berkeley to ever get tenure. That's how smart he is. He took male frogs, put them in water with landscaper's urine diluted 37,000 times. Put that male frog with the females, a group of them actually, they had a little pool, pool party. And what they found is those males never got the girl, ever. Not interested, were interested in the boys, and actually 10% of them grew ovaries and became females. And they were able to have kids. And the testosterone of all the rest of them went like this. So personally, I tell my, my listeners, I want my man to be a man. I want him with his testosterone, I don't want him clinically castrated. This is actually happening to our boys. My son had a friend with a micro penis, which is what atrazine does. It, also, the babies are born with old man's crodums. But it's literally changing the sexual orientation of our boys. Those hormone disruptors across the street from our schools are going to make it hard for those teenagers to have babies later in life, because they're being exposed during their puberty cycle. This is just a small amount. We have one C coated with neonicotinoids that can kill 360,000 bees, one C. And we're spraying it on everything. And you guys are spraying it all around the city. And I heard of people that went to the dog park, and the grass was some weird color, and there's actually a pesticide that does that. I've done my research. So the question is, do we want to continue down this path? Or do you want to take advantage of the team that I have put together over the last eight years that could turn this into a safe community with butterflies everywhere? We don't need any pesticides. I have someone that ran an entire city without one drop. I have another group that have taken citrus orchard in Florida, they were going to bulldoze because it wouldn't, the, the oranges fell off, tiny leaves, citrus disease, Asian citrus seed, I know all about it, so, but they were, in two years, they brought that orchard back to life. You know, we have to have premises for our farmers. We have to have alternatives that work. I have all that, and I invite you to work with me. My goal is 20,000 milkweed plants by the end of the year. I want to have a training where we bring landscapers and other people and learn how they can get away from it. It's not right. Roundup isn't Prop 65, this is cancer-causing, you know that. Why are we exposing the little kids fighting for their life with cancer at the hospital? They go outside for fresh air, and what are they breathing? So if you go to, I brought you cards. Go to bluemontechproject.com, go to problem, local pesticide use, and look at what's being sprayed just by the hospital and just by the academy and Redlands School District. I may be adding a lot more of the other cities and pesticides being used. When you look in Redlands, it's mainstream in the high, our students in the high school, it should be criminal what it's doing. So after eight and a half years, eight, eight years almost of talking to these scientists, there's absolutely no doubt in my mind, the severity of all this. And I want Loma Linda to be a role model for the world. We could become an all-organic city. I tried to sell Nature's Path Organic Cereal to the hospital, they could care less. My friends in Ethiopia, two years, their blood sugar never goes up. She's here in the hospital, it's skyrocketing. Lucerna, you know, this stuff that they're giving? First ingredient, GMO sugar. Not right. I keep thinking, what would Ellen White think? They were four, I was, I had to take the classes. I mean, I don't think she'd be happy with this. This is poisoning people, downright. Poisoned meat, hurt my thyroid, I'm pissed, to tell you the truth. So anyway, feel free to contact me. I'll be back.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brandon Quaid from Quaid Harley-Davidson.
Hello, gentlemen, how you doing? It's been a couple of years since I've been here. But I'm just going to bring up, a couple of years ago, I came here and you guys, we spoke about having an alcohol permit for some bike nights, and you guys appreciatively gave it to us, and it's been a great success for our store since then. We've had great turnouts, it's a great way for us to raise money. But, you know, kind of new coming here might open up a Pandora's Box for us to, you know, start looking at everything else we do. We're running into some issues, I know we didn't get on agenda, I'm hoping that there's maybe some way we can, you know, handle the issue tonight, if that's possible. Got my dad behind me, we inherited him after we sold Temecula, so he's now in Loma Linda, and Mark will go and buy him too. So if I miss anything, I'll bring them up here. So, basically, I want to discuss on vendor licenses and permits for events. We have a couple of key events, numerous events we do every year. Got to list them here, but we start out with all of them, and not all of them we pull a permit, because we don't feel it's necessary, there's no vendors coming through, and to be honest, I think it would cause more work for Conrad's, you know, over here than they want to do. But one of them we do is a Quaid raid, where we pick stories from heartfelt stories from our customers that write us through the year, and we kind of take their bike, and we actually present them with a check and make them a star for the day at our store, and it's a really successful event. Some of these stories are really, really tough to pick through. We say it's the hardest thing to do all year is pick from someone who has cancer, or somebody who may have lost a leg, or in a motorcycle accident, but we, we do this, and we've done this for three years. We do a Valentine's photo shoot, we do our four bike nights, we have an open house, which we're contractually with Harley have to do as our dealer agreement. We used to do one two-year, we turned it down to one because we've kind of become more event-oriented and almost overwhelmed our sense, because it's part of the nature of our business now. We do, these are staple events for us, we do the 9/11 Memorial Ride with the Loma Linda Fire Department. We also host something called the Eagle Run, which is the Roadhouse Biker Church, they put it on our store. I'll go back to some of these and some things that happened. This year, we hosted an event from a social club called Establishment, they run a motorcycle run called Shoot, Scoot and Loot. The reason we let them come is they usually started the run at our store, this year they wanted to end it. It was the only time we pulled a alcohol permit for the day for them. But the reason we bring them in is because they are the largest single charity contributor to the Royal McDonald House, that is not a business. In the last five years, they've raised $120,000, incredible amount of money. I mean, these guys do an amazing job. You know, some things that we do that we don't publicize, my uncle's, his personal one is we bring a bunch of veterans from the VA Hospital to our store, and we feed them Thanksgiving. My girls and my employees love it, they get ramped up for the year, and, you know, it's nothing we post, nothing we're, you know, we boast about, it's just something that we personally like to do. We bring about, about 30? 35, 40 guys right from the hospital, they come over, and they get to come over and get treated like kings for the day. Just something we do to get back. Of course, the Loma Linda Children's Hospital Toy Run, this year was our 18th year hosting it. So some of these things have been going on a long time. I want to talk about some accessory events that we do that, we'll bring it back to a little bit after I'm done here, but last year, we had the Wounded Warrior Project call us in a panic mode, five days before they were supposed to have their event up in Victorville Harley-Davidson, and they double booked, we know where to go, can we have it at Quaid Harley-Davidson? Sure, come on down. You know, and they showed up with a bunch of riders from, all the way from Vegas, and it was the first time I worked with the big national Wounded Warrior Project, but, you know, they truck in a, didn't know that they truck in a big barbecue food truck and fed all the riders and fed all the one at the store, it was really nice. We do, we hosted Nathan Tyler Davis Memorial Run, which was a soldier that got killed in Iraq out of Ucaipa, and the family, the dad, the mom, the family show up, and guys from all over the states show up, and they start at our store and leave. We host a lot of different charity rides, you know, as a starting point from our own store. It's pretty easy for us. Offsite events, we've done the Desert Thunder, which is the Sheriff Run, we've been a sponsor for them for 20 years, this will be our 21st year. Hangar 24 Air Fest, we're there, we're a big sponsor, we do radio ads with them. We do the San Bernardino Sheriff's Family Picnic Barbecue, the Sheriff's Rodeo this year, and we're going to continue, we had a great time this year in San Bernardino. We even do a Tomorrow Festival in Colton. You know, going into our events, a couple of years ago, we said, hey, you know, if you, the vendors need a permit, but if it's charity, you don't need one. Okay, great, because every single event we do has a charity element to it. For example, this is in the last two years, and these will continue for the year, Loma Linda Fire Department, which is a bike night I have coming up in a week and a half, they're the recipient this year, this first one, from the alcohol permit, we give 100% of the proceeds on alcohol for the charity. FD Cancer is a foundation I worked for the years, Royal McDonald House always, you know, been a charity of ours, VA Hospital, Loma Linda University Children's Hospital, Rebuilding Warriors, which is, we had a group come out, and they'd give dogs to disabled vets. We've had another charity where we give wheelchairs to vets that somehow don't qualify for them, and if you saw these guys, you would be blown away and couldn't believe how they got turned down for a wheelchair, barely walk, but we, you know, every year we end up giving some wheelchairs away. World Build Foundation, personal friend of mine started a foundation for another military group, combat vets, Motor Fam's a motorcycle one, Roadhouse Biker Church. And another one we do on our open house every year, the last four years, is Autism, Precious Hearts Academy in San Bernardino. And to note that the two founders are graduates of Loma Linda. So wonderful, wonderful husband and wife, just great people. And I'm going to vendors. So explaining to our events, what we're running into, and Conrad has been working with us great, you know, he's been trying to help out, we abide by every rule if we have to, you know, fire department, I've, you know, had to do some exit plans and bring in emergency lighting for our bike nights, and set fire extinguishers out on my perimeters, whatever we need to do. If we need a sheriff to attend at one of our events, we'll pay for the sheriff, not a problem. So we're not asking to change the rules of what we're, but the vendors is an issue. What happened was, you know, was the charity were okay, kind of one of our events last year, all of a sudden, last second, hey, you're going to get a code enforcement officer at your store in two days, and they're going to fine everybody that doesn't have a permit. You know, I'm going, I got two days, I've got 25 vendors, and that's going to be a problem. Conrad worked it out, we ran down and paid for a handful of vendor permits just to appease, you know, everyone's got a job to do, we understand that. But let me explain you some of our vendors, I want to, I understand, I understand a vendor situation, but it's not like Redlands Market Night, you know. Half of our vendors that'll show up, we actually do business with daily. Our business is a little unique, we have vendors, I could probably say, close to 1,000 vendors in a, in a year that we could deal with, but they'll show up to our store in an event, they'll set up, maybe show off their latest ingorilus shocks, or windshields, or doodads on the bike, somebody might want to add, somebody might be outside during our event, they'll say, go back inside and buy it from Quaid, we're just here to show off. A lot of other vendors that we always have are attorneys that like to participate in this community, the biker community, and always have some churches there. We have the Black Sheep and the Roadhouse Biker Church at every event, pretty much. So what happens is for us is, it's becoming a little bit of a hindrance where we're asking our vendors, you got to come and buy a city permit, and to be honest, it's going to turn some of them off. I'm going to go back to a couple of incidents that happened last year. We had a, we had a bike night, and to be honest, we've never had any issues. I had made one mistake, I brought a vendor which was a dyno machine which creates a lot of noise, I put him in the wrong area, I put him close to the hotel. So, understanding that, you know, hey, they're making extreme amount of noise, well, it's not more noise than we ever make when we have an event, it's just, so I said, hey, I won't have it, you know, I won't put that guy over there again, or even have him at the store. Uh, it was a dyno machine where a guy puts their bike on, and they run it as hard as they can and tune it, and, you know, so I think there was probably some doctors with, you know, the water was rattling at the hotel, and, you know, so we didn't, you know, it wasn't something I was thinking about, but that won't happen again. And in respects to, you know, our neighbors, which, you know, respectfully, we've been here for a long time, but we, I decided instead of pulling a permit to 10 o'clock on a bike night, I pulled it back down to nine o'clock, just to turn it down a little early. But, you know, there were some complaints, and, you know, Conrad respectfully called us, said, you got some issues, you had a lot of noise. I said, okay, you know, I didn't put it together what the problem was. But the next following week, we have a, the Roadhouse, it's called the Eagle Run, and this is our fourth year hosting it, and I never pulled a permit, because I was also told at one point, if it's a church event or something like that, you guys are good to go. They host a family, every year they pick a family member that's lost a loved one on a motorcycle, they bring the kids in, they give them bicycles, they do all this. We're hosting dealer for them, so what we do is we say, you're welcome to use our property, we kind of put them off the left. Well, I caught, you know, five days later after a bike night, I caught that they had Carl's Jr. Truck coming, I didn't realize that. And I know there's an issue with food trucks with the city of Loma Linda, and I'm not sure if you guys are aware of that, but there's a stickler issue if any food truck comes around. So I told my church pastor Denver, I said, listen, you're going to have to go to the city, this is going to cause a storm, but you're going to have to try to get that food truck permitted. Well, walk in the city council, well, you need a vendor, you need a vet permit. Okay, see if we can pull that permit, and this was on a Wednesday, you guys aren't, open on Friday, so we're too late. So, you know, respectfully, I didn't want to, I wasn't, we're not here to upset the city, so I said, listen, and they came to us panicked. We got this, I mean, they got the whole church involved every year, they run the whole show, do the trash, they do the, they do, they do the whole entire project, set up tents, and I said, listen, what we'll do is we're going to take the vendors that are supposed to be outside, and we're talking about mom-and-pop vendors, we're talking about the neighborhood Candy Girl, and Girl Scout Cookies, and pool cleaning, I mean, I let them run the show, like I don't know what vendors they bring in, but they support the church. So we brought them all inside our store, and we moved all our merchandise outside for the day, first time I ever did that. You know, respectfully, after it was done, I mean, it was a great event, it's wonderful, get a call from the office, we're going to have to fine you, you guys broke the rules. So I said, you know, listen, I did not have vendors outside. I know if you drove by, it looked like that, I had some church tents outside, I had some people signing up for a poker run that they do, but I had a big tent where a band plays, and they had their service out front. And, you know, I said, you know, I said, I would gladly pay the fine, I said, but, you know, talking to Conrad, I said, I don't think it's going to be the same with my uncle and my dad. So respectfully, Conrad didn't charge us a fee, but sided us, you know, we'd never sided before, I said, I understand, you know, but this is what we're running into, you know. Shoot, Scoot and Loot was another event we had, this is the one that raises, they raised over $32,000 this year. It got a little heavy, I feel like, you know, the relationship's a little strained. We had to have more than I thought was necessary cops show up for the day, I think they, the sheriffs were there respectfully, they were there for a couple hours, and about an hour, and they, they're thinking that the wrong crew's coming in, and about an hour, they just sent me a card, said, if there's anything, let me know, no problem. We've never had an issue at our store that was needed called out for, in the biker community. We've had sheriffs at our store a lot lately for fraud and theft, and we've caught a lot, we've caught almost every single one in the last month, we've done a pretty good job at catching them. So, again, with the Sheriff's Department, us, longstanding relationship's been great. But what happened with Establishment was, you have two sheriffs, and then we're going to send out a code enforcement officer, and we're going to charge you four hours for it. Okay, well, Gil was there for about five minutes and was gone, but it was $1,500 around that was taken out of Royal McDonald House to pay these dues to have an event. And so now we're at a point where these two key events, I know for a fact, the Roadhouse Biker Church, the city manager of San Bernardino is asking them to bring the event off of our site to San Bernardino, and that's a problem for us, because they panicked, they worried about vendors and fees and, you know, and Shoot, Scoot and Loot, you know, the Establishment group out of Redlands, their hang-up is not unless they want to leave, but the fact that they gave $1,500 less to Royal McDonald House, that's a problem with them. So, you know, talking to Conrad, part of the problem was, the city manager said, the city attorney says, you know, some of the solutions that we thought was, you know, give us a one-time fee, the city manager, the city attorney says, you know, that's a tax, and we can't change the city code, and that would, you know, the public, the city, city homeowner has to vote on that. Okay, so what we're saying here is, we're glad to pay a tax, whether it be, we gave a couple of solutions, you know, Temecula, we were at a Temecula store, they never cared about vendors, we paid a city permit, and we're able to operate fine. Conrad had a great solution, it was a one-time yearly fee, or call it a tax, we're glad to pay, to cover the vendor portion of this. We, we understand that if we have an event, it's complicated when we have an event, we have a fire grid we lay out, and actual square footage of the tents, and every seven tents, there's got to be a 10-foot space according to code, and so there's a lot of things that go in for us to pull an event permit, planning. All of a sudden, the Loma Linda Children's Hospital run that we never pulled an event for, we pull an event, we've got to have routes and things that have been, you know, and so we're doing these things, and we don't have an issue with those. It's really mainly, I had It's really mainly, I have a bike night coming up in a week and a half, and I can tell you that I have my, one of my employees calling and telling the vendors, hey, there's a fee, I have vendors coming from Orange County in LA that support the community, I had two drop out today. They said, oh, you know, that's, we'll, we'll maybe make the next one, because they don't see the vendor permit, they don't see this, the city fee as a, you know, I, again, a lot of these vendors aren't there to make money, um, and a lot of them, if they made a hundred dollars for the night, they would be happy, they just like being there and they support the event. So, um, I hope that I was clear, seeing the, the issues that we're running into, um, would love to, you know, if, if, if the, if the issues of tax, don't call an event fee, call it a event tax, maybe, you know, um, we can go about that. Um, again, I have a, a bike, our first bike night of the year, we do four a year, um, coming up this month, and, uh, I think we're running problems, the problem with us, um, is that we see this is gonna hurt us monetarily, and that's an issue. Um, cause these are people we do business with, we do business with monthly, daily, and, uh, they help us promote our store. I can tell you that even since the last two years since we've been here, we've been extremely successful in a down market for motorcycling. We, um, we, we feel like our reputation has been, if not top-notch, it's been recognized by Milwaukee and all the way up, they say, make Quaid Harley-Davidson, we had a, the, from the CEO of our app came out and said, I can't tell you this on, in a com, you know, but he said, if we could mirror Quaid Harley-Davidson across the country, we'd model your store after the rest of the stores in the, around the world. So, that was the highest compliment we can get behind closed doors, so we're appreciative of that, cause we run a, a tight store and, so, um, this is a direct reflect, uh, you know, the things that we do in the community, the money we raise and the events we have help us sell motorcycles, hands down, bar none, I wouldn't do it if it didn't, cause it's a lot of work. Um, you know, so, um, you know, we just don't wanna run it, we're running into the issue, I've been really reluctant with a lot of events, a lot of people asking me, and coming here today, we're supposed to be, hopefully, we're gonna be on agenda to fix it. Um, you know, I, I think the fix could be very easy, I, I think that we could, you guys wanna call it a tax, we can pay a tax, a one-time year tax, uh, an event tax, um, you know, if the issue's tax, you know, the, I mean, we're all being real here, if we're selling less motorcycles, there goes the taxes, I mean, that's the problem, so.
Well, you probably understand, since you're saying you hope you can get on the agenda, that we can't do anything significant, uh, in comment period. About all we can do is wink and nod at the staff over there and get them to work on it. So it sounds like you've already been working with Conrad.
See, in fact, still, a little bit of clarity, um, you know, the coins have been very compliant, everything we've asked them to do, they have done, um, they've really stepped up and, and, you know, if we, if we need it, they do it, and they're trying, they're trying to work with us. Unfortunately, our business license code category, categorizes the business license as a tax, not as a fee. So, we had some, some language that would've adjusted that, unfortunately, we can't adjust a tax without a vote of the people. So, we are exploring a mechanism to either define the special event tax as, define that particular type of vendor at the special event clearly, and then it is within the power of the council to waive that, to waive a tax. I think Diana pointed that out, if she's, if I'm correct, but we need to, we need to explore that to make-
Counsel can take action to suspend a tax.
What's that?
Counsel can take action to suspend a tax.
So, we, we would have to clearly define what category, and we're working on that now, um, and, you know, Brandon was anticipating us to get some, some language that changed the fee and it's not a fee, it's a tax, so we're, we're gonna have to come back to this. But they've, they've worked with us, uh, throughout, and, uh, we, we will bring you something back that addresses this one way or another. And like I said, they, they're an important part of the community, and they, they really have been very compliant throughout everything we've asked them, and, um, some, some of their events get to be pretty big and they've done everything they can to contain them and, and work within the system.
Just, just a comment, um, the, uh, I wanna be sure that I, everybody in the room is on the same page here. My understanding, Mr. City Attorney, is that if it's not an agendized item, we cannot make a decision, uh, is that correct?
That's correct. In fact, uh, the Brown Act prohibits any discussion on an item that's not on the agenda other than brief response or direction to staff.
So you're telling me to be quiet and obey the rules?
Yes.
So, just to break the rule a little bit, um, I appreciate the community outreach and the service orientation, and, uh, my sense is that, uh, you are working hard to find a balance between community engagement with running a business where you have to make money and make a living, and so I applaud that. Um, and it's, you know, it sounds like the city is working with you to try to find a fix for what's kind of a awkward problem, both for you and for us, and, uh, so I appreciate hearing that you're working collaboratively with them, but you do understand we're a little hand-tied for tonight.
I understand, I get, I guess, you know, I'm kind of figuring something like this was gonna, I have a question, is there any way, um, for my event coming up in a week and a half that I can not ask all my vendors to get permits, or, you know, I, it's, it's already affecting us, um, I don't-
That's a city attorney question.
We, we cannot take action in a public forum, but you, you and I, we've, we've worked out stuff in the past and we'll work, we'll work something out as an interim measure.
Okay, um, thank you guys.
You know, council's looking forward for an answer, long-term, not short-term on this, so we'll, we'll work something out.
I, I would wanna point out that, I know you took about 20, 25 minutes to address this, and technically, he should've cut you off three minutes, at three minutes.
Oh, okay.
So, my suggestion is, all of our phone numbers are public.
Okay.
You're more than welcome to talk to us, and we go talk to them, and we tell them are you're full, how we feel about this, we doesn't need a council consensus for that.
Okay.
So that's how, that's another way to really get things going without us having to have a long discussion, because we do have complaints from residents for a lot of issues, and a lot of those things can be addressed without ever actually going through a public forum.
Okay.
Our job is here to represent the constituents, and you're one of them, so I think the best, more sufficient way is to address it. I, I know time is of the essence for you, and you're trying to get this resolved for this issue, unfortunately, as you can tell, we can't do anything about it.
Good.
But in the future, feel free to call any of us.
Okay.
And, uh, we'll be more than happy to work with you and get more details, ask you questions, so we have a better understanding of the situation. I, it's always important for us to know both sides of the story, uh, it would be nice to hear the issues you've had, we've had lots of issues with code enforcement, that's coming up over and over again, and you're not the only one. So I, I'd like to learn more, a little bit more about how we can do to improve that process.
And again, we just want, I think that, you know, we wanna make anything's really smooth here, we don't, I think it would help out the, the whole entire process, I'm sure that we're bringing a lot more work that doesn't wanna be done, if that makes sense. So, I appreciate you guys' time, and, uh, thank you very much for hearing us. Thank you.
That discussion of the fee versus the tax reminded me of Obamacare, the mandate.
Oh, I'd also like to thank you, by the way, for pointing out exactly where the grill is, so I'll be keeping this in, so for myself, so, others might appear the, like the beer pouring station, which is marked right here, but, uh, I'll keep this, thanks.
We'll have them wait for you.
Thanks, Emily.
Yeah, the reason I'm generous with the time is cause we so seldom get public comment, it's just like, you know, we, we have to just kind of luxuriate in it once in a while. And the guys who saw this as a five-minute agenda are upset, but...
Thank you for your time.
See, I'm trying to balance the community needs versus...
Do your own job.
Yeah, once in a while. Okay, we have another comment from Lawrence Beer.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council, my name is Lawrence Beer and I represent a telecom company called Xnet Systems. I don't represent them, I work for them. Um, back in September of last year, we pulled a permit to directional bore some fiber optic cable under Mountain View Avenue, uh, in the public right-of-way. When my, when my construction manager contacted the city in December when we were ready to start construction, um, we were informed that the permit had been canceled because of, of a determination of, of congested utilities in the area where we wanted to bore, and, and we were requested to, um, enter into a license agreement with the city to, to pull our fiber through the city's own conduit on the other side of Mountain View. Um, we were happy to do that, um, we were provided the license, uh, contract document, reviewed it, sent it back for processing on December 20th, and we've never heard another thing about it. Um, I followed up with, with Mr. Bolowitz, um, multiple times, um, emails and phone calls, a couple of times I've, I've CC'd the mayor and the mayor pro tem, and, um, and just have never heard a word, not even get the heck out of here. Um, we, we wanna do business with the city and hope you'll make it possible for us to do it. We think this is a simple contract, it is non-controversial, um, just, just a license to pull some fiber through an existing city asset, wondering if you could help me with some direction, either, either to me or, or to staff with how, how I can get this done. Our, our construction schedule's already kind of blown up, we thought we were gonna be able to have the whole thing done by the end of the year, and now it's 90 days later and we don't know where to turn next.
I have, for whatever reason, I got your contract the first thing this morning from the city manager, and we're reviewing it now, we should have something back to you here in a couple of days, cause I think it's just a, without going into too much detail, little text changes, um, from what we had before, so.
Yeah, I think it was a, one text change that our, that our attorney had requested after she looked at it, but it was, um, um, okay, well, if we think that we can have-
But you'll hear from me in the morning.
Something back this week, I'd, I'd truly appreciate it.
Yep.
I had a curiosity, where's this fiber going, from where to where?
Uh, well, I will, um, I have the construction drawings on-
Well, just in general, what's the purpose of it? Who are you, who are you gonna be providing fiber to?
Um, it's dark fiber, we serve many enterprise clients, our, our initial customer is a wireless carrier who's installing some small cells, but that's their project and, and we have ours.
I see, you're a subcontractor, I see.
Well, we're, they're our customer, we're, um, we're a, we're a CLAC, we, we have our own CPCN from the Public Utilities Commission and, and operate as a telecom utility with the state's authority.
So this fiber is going to a cellphone tower?
Um, I think it's a, a small cell antenna attached to a utility pole, if I understand correctly, I'm, I'm not-
One of our utility poles?
Uh, no, it's, it's running from over by Corporate Business Center to a little, a little micro tower, back up Mountain View to the, I think you're hitting Verizon up there on Mission Road.
I, I believe it's a Verizon site, yeah.
So rather than cut up all the streets and everything, they're going to use the city conduit for that.
Okay, well, thank you for your time, I appreciate the audience, thank you very much. Thank you, Conrad.
Thanks. Okay, now we can get to our consent calendar.
I have one correction on item number seven, uh, instead of Fayetteville Fort, it's actually Sunrise Fort of Fontana, sorry.
I'm sorry, where are we at?
Item number seven, uh, to purchase order to Sunrise Fort of Fontana.
Did you get a cheaper price?
Yes.
I think we're all good with that. I'll move the, uh, consent calendar.
Yes, number six is right now the traffic signal on Anderson between campus and, I'm sorry, between Stewart Street and University Court, it's not synchronized, so what we're doing is, we put, we're gonna put in the fiber optic to connect the two signal. And, uh, the city council approved the mid-year budget, so now I can spend the money.
How is that gonna deal with the fact that there's an extensive demand phase for one of the movements from Stewart Street onto Anderson, because then it's difficult to coordinate.
And we, we fixed that one, remember, we add more time for the left turn.
Yeah, but that made it difficult to coordinate with other intersections. Will it still?
Yes.
Handle that?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second.
And I have a question, poll number eight.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I read it, uh, this is the Edison proposal for tree removal and so forth, and the way it's written, it sounds like we have to do it anyway, or Edison has to do it, uh, but I'm, I'm not quite clear where they're gonna be removing trees and, uh, where they're working.
Yes, for this portion is along Edison easement, between, from the South Hill.
Yeah.
All the way along, along the, the easement, go across Beaumont.
Right, 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 right.
Hinkley and so forth, eventually go north past the freeway. Couple of years ago, I mean, 12 years now, yes, 12 years ago, we, we planted trees.
Right.
Underneath the Edison easement, and now they're gonna be-
Orange trees primarily, aren't they, or?
There's some orange trees, some, uh, McNaule trees.
So those are all coming out?
Some, some are coming out, right. I wanna make sure that I can go back and plant them when they're done.
Okay, um, one, yeah, so I agree with that. Uh, the other thing though, is there a notice being sent to the property owners that are adjacment, adjacent to that easement, because I know those people move into those homes, and I've had several just talk with me, not complain, but they start getting worried about the towers, so if the new towers are going to be closer to some of the homes, I got a feeling we're gonna hear about that.
This, this is what would happen, what happened is they had to put in a temporary pole, a temporary post, to transfer the wire from the, the existing pole to, to that, to the new one, and then replace the existing tower with a taller one, and then move the, the wires back into the new pole, and then remove the temporary pole.
So the, the, the footprint of the towers and wires will remain the same when the job's completed?
There's, there's-
It'll just be higher with more wires?
Yes, yes.
Um, and, uh, is there a plan?
Yes.
Is Edison planning to notify people that are adjacent to that easement, what's gonna be happening?
There, there's, they're planned in my office, if they want to come look at it. There was a public workshop, public hearing here in the community room a couple of years ago, and more likely, yes, I will ask Edison to send out more.
But I think before they actually begin digging dirt.
Yes.
Uh, and electrical lines start swinging in the air, uh, if, if I had property adjacent, I'd wanna know what was going on and-
Yes.
What's gonna happen if there's an earthquake while they've got the temporary towers up and all those-
I, I will, I will check with-
But Edison should, I don't think that's a city responsibility.
No.
Edison should be notified.
We can ask them, there was, there was public noticing and they had to mail notices, I believe it's a 300-foot each side of the tower, just as part of their EIR, but that was done in 20, completed in 2016, so those notices probably would've gone out in 2014 or so. So, um, you know, a lot of those houses may have changed hands, but I don't know that they're, they're required to notice prior to construction, but we can ask them to do that.
Um, can we do more than ask them? Uh, cause what if they say, no, we don't, it's not part of our routine?
I, I don't think we have any legal authority to compel that, but-
I'm, I'm dealing with them right now on another route, they, they propose on, on across Mountain View, go the alleyway and go up Redlands Boulevard to Beaumont, and they want to put more poles and, and, and be more wires, and I have issue with that, so I'm working with them on that one too, so I will, I will definitely let them know about this one and go for it.
I think it's only fair to the citizens that, uh, I mean, sure, they bought the property right next to the poles, but nonetheless, to kind of make them feel like they're included in what's going on.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, uh, do you have a motion in a second?
Yeah, there's a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Is there any opposition to the consent calendar? I hear none, so it's passed unanimously. New business, number nine, the fire department, agreement with the county sheriff.
And I'm gonna declare conflict on this item and step out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, before you, is a agreement with, uh, Sheriff's Dispatch, or Sheriff's Department for dispatch services for our parking control officer, uh, for, I guess, history of that, that officer, she really is out without really any officer safety communications with a dispatch center that follows her, her means, when there's an issue, uh, when she needs deputy backup, is to call the counter at City Hall to see if the receptionist can call the police department to get someone out to help her. Certainly doesn't really meet a standard for officers, standard for officer safety that, that's probably, uh, fit as things have moved throughout time in the community, Brandy definitely, uh, runs into some, some, uh, volatile situations out there. In addition, uh, there's required information that for, uh, certain toes and registrations and a number of owner inform, pieces of owner information. Um, throughout time, Brandy has found a way to work around that system to try to glean information, however, we are into, uh, we've been informed that some of the workarounds potentially violate some of the confidentiality pieces, you know, of those. Brandy, our officer needs her own agreement for that, that information system. This- This agreement accomplishes both of those things, both of those really is handling business right, so. This is also going to the Board of Supervisors tomorrow? Tomorrow? So our recommendation is that we approve this agreement and I think the board is getting the same from the Sheriff's Department.
Just to be sure I understand, the, since the parking control officer works under the umbrella of safety and that's why it's handled by the fire department? Who does he report to?
The fire department.
Fire department? Okay. That's, when I read this, I thought it would be the sheriff's that was talking about it, but, I mean, it makes sense. I'm just choking on the $16,000 a year so that we have access to the sheriff dispatcher. It just seems like a heck of a lot of money because we're only adding one person, right? Do we have more than one?
It's, this would equal a tenth of a dispatcher plus all the overhead and all the items that went through their contracting department, so I don't know.
I'm not, let me be clear. I'm not, in the size of the city budget, I'm not picking at $16,000, but I'm not sure I fully understand what's happening here. I think there's got to be more involved. So when, can you be practical with me and tell me, if I'm a safety officer and I'm enforcing traffic codes and so forth throughout the city, how does this change my job and my access to call in for support if I need it?
So our officer would have direct communication with a dispatcher in addition to being there when you need them. If you've ever listened to a law enforcement communication system, those officers are tracked or there's awareness when they're out with a subject, they'll go with vehicle, sorry, location updates to dispatch. They're being tracked and followed throughout their day. There's like a, an IER, a watch system throughout the communications. That's a system we've never been able to provide. Simply, it's, like I described, it's a little archaic how we've operated. We've made it work, but this really represents more state-of-the-art officer safety, so...
Have we had some issues?
We do. Brandy requests, needs to request deputy support on occasion, yeah.
Okay.
People will get pretty passionate about parking citations.
Yeah, no, I understand. Not that I get parking tickets, but I understand.
So, just so I understand, so she's, if she wants to get data, she's got to call someone at the city who then calls the dispatchers to get that data?
Well, that's more for just, for officer assistance. The data, it would be trying to work with one of the SSF officers or if there's a deputy she can find that can get that. They shouldn't be doing that. But I think certainly they have, they aren't trying to violate anything, but they're violating, they aren't doing something appropriate. Their department won't allow them to continue that procedure, that way of getting this information. It's in conflict with that information systems privacy practices, so...
I'm still not understanding what you just said. Does she need data that is only accessible through the city?
No, through the...
Dispatch process? So she doesn't pick up the call and call the dispatcher and get it?
It's law enforcement information, like a deputy would access through a computer system, a data terminal. We don't have that at the city.
Okay, I see. So she needs a, okay, so she needs a deputy's access via his own or her's terminal in order to verify registration, ownership, and things like that nature?
And having them access that is in violation of the privacy.
I see.
So she has to have her own access to the system.
So there's no way for her to be provided with that computer type of system?
There will be now. She'll be part of the system through this agreement.
Okay, so in other words, oh, I see, so then her car is going to be now...
She will have a...
Have the same link as the officers?
Yeah.
Okay, now I understand.
Within the parameters of a public enforcement officer.
Yeah, she doesn't need to do criminal records and all that.
That's right.
No, I understand, okay. Okay, now I understand better, okay.
I'd like to hear from the sheriff's department.
And she's also going to receive the training that she needs to receive that information, the confidential information. She's going to go to one of our COP academies. They have a date at the COP Academy where they talk about nothing but security for CLETS, which is the California law enforcement telecommunications system. That's what she needs. She needs access to information in that system in order to do her job without violating any rules.
That's fine. It's not clear in the staff report that we're actually providing her with an actual unit. It just shows that, gives her access to it without really specifying how.
It's, it's not a unit, it's just, I mean, she'll have a call sign, but it gives her the ability to request that from the dispatcher, you know, over the air, who will access the computer system. She won't get her own data terminal.
Do we have the budget? Okay. Well, if we've got the money and, I understand the safety part of it, that makes sense, so...
The question would be, I guess, shouldn't this, moving forward when we do fee updates, should this additional to the parking enforcement program be inserted or spread over the cost of fees and citations and things over time? So that's something we can...
How many citations do we write in an average? And I'm talking traffic, parking citations do we do in an average month? Does the university writes their own, right? So I assume the county writes their own. I'd like to figure out where else people can...
Yeah, there was a time, there was, you know, roughly twenty a day. You know, some of our time zones have decreased a little bit with some of the development.
Yeah.
Certainly Campus Street at one time, before it went four-lane wide, we had some timed around the campus. So we have a lot less of that and a lot more just residential parking is the primary focus. So I would say, you know, a dozen a day.
But the parking officer is only enforcing city street parking?
That's correct. Yeah, not private property.
Yeah.
Unless, unless a private property owner invites us and asks us to patrol, you know, something on their behalf, or they will also look at handicap places in like the State of Brothers parking lot, but yes, it's, it's not university property or VA property.
And the $16,000 is an annual fee then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll move the, let's see, what do we have here? Okay, I'll move the item.
Okay, any further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, you've got an approval unanimously. Any reports of councilmen? Let's get Councilman Duper back.
We have two more agendas to go through. It'll take us three minutes.
I don't have a report, but I just want to publicly state that one of the things that I would like the council to look into is the proliferation, and I've talked with some of city staff about this, but just in recent weeks, I've had several complaints and issues related to the proliferation of houses that are not owner-occupied and rent out sometimes to many people. And my sense is, from our discussions, is there's not a lot that we can do about it, but I think it would warrant a discussion so that we understand the scope of the problem and try to, I don't want to assume we can't do anything about it without talking about it.
I just had a general statement regarding trees, since we discussed trees earlier with the right-of-way, but I've had some complaints about Prospect and Belair, yeah, Belair Street. The trees there, I know they're on private property, they're very, very thick and looks like it's covering some of our lights and it's getting extremely dark at night and it's, if you walk in that area, it's like you're inside of a forest, so we need to try to see if we can resolve that and try to, because they've had some issues with thefts and burglaries and things of that nature because it is dark, so it's easier for people to get in and out and you can't even see them, so. It's the apartments there at the corner of, thanks.
League of Cities is finalizing our scheduled meetings and stuff for this year. We have, we have one scheduled for Loma Linda that'll probably be happening in June, May or June, and the topic we're trying to organize right now is that county-wide homeless initiative, so it's important, I think, that we all kind of pre-plan for that. And then there's a good one coming up here in Ontario. Next meeting, we'll talk about PERS and the PERS implications, so if you guys are available, I'll get you all that information or Laura will.
Yeah, I'll be going to the PERS meeting.
The date of the PERS meeting?
It's April 12, I believe.
And the next one that you're talking about that we would be hosting is June?
Yes, we're looking at June. We've got to solidify a date. I think we're, we're looking at the same venue as our chamber, probably.
Last comment I'd like to make, Mayor, if I might, and that is that, I've said it before and I'll continue to say it as long as it's worthy, but in driving around, looking at the landscaping and particularly the quality of the streets in neighboring cities, well, I got to say, our city staff, our public works department does an outstanding job with maintaining most stuff. Yeah, you had a worried look. Well, except for the, except for the Mountain View interchange, it's sprayed, okay, because those are growing. I was just about to take my shovel out there the other day. But in terms of the quality of our streets and our median landscaping, I mean, I'm very proud of our city and how we do it, and I'm pleased, and maybe you need to tell the other members since I've raised this issue before, but we have parts of medians that the city doesn't maintain because the developer that put up property elected to do it and they don't do it. But now we're taking those over, correct? And so we'll see a more uniform manicured landscaping in the medians in the future. So I just...
And we're charging them for it?
Yes.
Okay, good.
They signed up for landscape assessment district now.
Good.
Which...
Yeah, we need...
I'll take credit for that one.
Yeah, we need uniformity in our, in our quality. I've noticed that our new Beaumont Avenue flasher is out. It died within a month.
That's the one going east.
The eastbound one, the eastbound one has been failing every time I drive by it. Maybe, maybe I'm just too slow.
Well, I was just saying, maybe your battery-powered car doesn't go fast enough.
Yeah, I'm sending, I'm sending signals to it, so...
That's probably, yeah.
Does, does, the westbound works really well, but the eastbound...
Yeah, westbound is the one I see all the time, yeah.
Well, then, then I would say it's intermittent. Because it doesn't work when I see it.
Maybe because you're under the speed limit, if you go faster, it flashes them.
That's seldom a problem.
I don't think it's the speed, I think it's the size of his car that's not registering.
I can't even set it off in my minivan, so there's a problem.
No, every time that westbound one starts flashing at me, I see Councilman Lenart.
Yes.
Flashing at me, so I keep my noise level down as I pass his esteemed, uh, book.
Can you reword, is he Councilman Lenart flashing? Is there a way to say that?
I think we should provide a...
Probably, but not as humorous.
We should provide a warning sign that people with epilepsy should not approach this sign because it's, it's quite shocking.
Yeah, it is, yeah, no.
He's receptive to those, to those suggestions because he put in delineators over on Mission after we had that last complaint.
Really, already?
Big yellow delineators out in the middle of the roadway.
Yeah.
You gotta make a sign, have to do that. You're monitoring.
Yes. Very cool.
Yeah, my message...
I have to say, as annoying as it is, it does work. I mean, just to get that flashing beam out of your eyes.
Yeah, my advice to other cities is if you want to get things done in your city, promote your public works person to city manager.
There you go.
So, okay, our next item is reports of officers. No takers.
We have the Chamber of Commerce, our installation dinner this Thursday night, so at the town place.
Five-thirty, right?
Five-thirty, yes.
Dinner at six. Is the mayor going to make a speech at that?
No. No, they're going to foreshorten the swearing-in process and they're only going to swear in new officers and not do the usual re-swearing of everybody every year, because I think they probably, since it's the usual suspects, they've already been sworn in a few dozen times. So with that, if there's no other comment, then the city council is adjourned, but we have two more agendas for our visitors that we need to get through. First is the housing authority. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any comment from the public on any items not on the housing authority agenda? And given its brevity, that could encompass the entire known world, because all we have is demands register and minutes. No takers. Okay, so the consent calendar?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. Any chair member reports? Any reports of officers? Hearing none, we're adjourned. That's a quick one. Next is the successor agency. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any comments from the public on items not on the agenda? Hearing none. How about the consent calendar?
I'll move it, I have a question.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. What's your question?
On the minutes calendar, I noticed that DHA Consulting, they're helping us do the ROPS and it's almost the exact same amount that it was on the housing authority. Are those two separate things that they're doing or are we just billing two different agencies for it?
Those are two separate items. She also works with our state filing that we have to file, the annual, the annual housing report, so she helps us with that as well.
So is this a one-time thing or does it only cover a quarter or...
For the housing, it's an annual report.
Okay.
She does do some housing monitoring for the apartment complexes where we have to manage the revenue contracts and stuff, so she does some revenue analysis for that for the housing, but the ROPS, then she does help us for the ROPS cycle.
And the ROPS are only twice a year though, right?
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously, and that agenda is adjourned and we are done for the evening. Thank you all for coming. Hope you had fun.